Good evening and welcome to the March 26, 2024 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight, I would like to speak to council. Please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters germane to city council. Light system is going to be three minutes. After stating your name and address, a green light will appear. After two minutes, you'll see a yellow light. After three minutes, you will see a red light, and we ask that you take your seat at that time. The city code identifies participation regarding items on tonight's agenda, provides the opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to council. Matters that are germane to council means that matters that the city council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, or your organization. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Pastor Chamberlain with Hilton Christian Church provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilwoman Dr. Woodbury will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is the practice of council members to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
I would ask you to be in an attitude of prayer in keeping with your personal practice. Oh, Holy One, in this week of holy days, Hindu holy, Jewish Purim, Muslim Ramadan, Christian Easter, this council meets to hear issues that face the citizens of this city. They will be called to make decisions on some of the mundane things of ongoing business. Grant them wisdom as they are called upon to make decisions on a wide range of items, including zoning, conditional use permits, code amendments, taxes, and even easements that touch the lives of children. Please grant that the members of this council will have ears to hear all the sides of these issues presented. Help them to be especially aware of those affected by their decision, but who are not able to make their voices heard here tonight. Grant them the wisdom to represent the greater good of the whole community and not just those with money and voice to make their case. Grant them eyes to see the hidden needs these issues may raise and grant them hearts that break at human needs these issues address. By your grace, grant them courage to work for a city that is just and habitable for all of her citizens. And grant them a sound night's rest after they have transacted the business tonight. Let it be a rest of those who do the work of justice. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in honoring our country's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse Councilman Ely from this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Thank you. Presentation. This evening, we are continuing our presentations on breakthrough initiatives here in Newport News. The STARS program, which stands for Student Trial Advocates Reaching for Success, was created by attorney Shannon Jones to provide high school students in the city of Newport News with a unique perspective on the criminal justice system. While the program centers on a mock trial held in the spring of each year, its primary focus is the valuable mentorship our youth receive from Newport News attorneys, judges, and members of law enforcement. Currently in its fifth year, the STARS program strives to equip students with the resilience needed to overcome everyday challenges and to promote positive interactions between the community and our legal system. This year's trial advocates are 10th and 11th grade from Achievable Dream. This evening, we have here with us Shannon Jones, students from Achievable Dream, as well as the officers in the Community and Youth Outreach Division of the Newport News Police Department. At this time, can we please have STARS Ambassador Jackson and Painter come to the podium to address city council at this time?
Good afternoon, Mayor Jones and city council. And I would like to say thank you so much for having us in attendance tonight. I would first like to start off, I know Shana can also relate to this too, but I am very thankful to be having to participate in the STARS mock trial program. They have done so much for us, for all of their participants, and us included as ambassadors, by first off letting us come to events like these where we can meet up with city council, letting us go to events like Jasper Justice that's going to be happening later in April, and other events that they've done for us too. Also, the amount of skills that we've picked up from the trial program and the amount of attorneys that we've met up to is phenomenal.
Yes, also, the networking in itself is amazing. We get to connect with so many different people connected to the Newport News Circuit Court, and it, the skills that we learn prepare us to go into the career of law later on. And we're just really, really thankful for the support of the Newport News Police Department and everybody else involved. We could not be here now, standing here, speaking to you about this wonderful program without them. Speaking of which, our trial date, the date of our mock trial is?
April 24.
April 24, and we would like to invite you all.
Great. I think us, I know I'll be there, but I know we'll try to be there.
Where is it held?
Oh, it's going to be held down here at?
Circuit Court.
Circuit Court, okay, thank you.
And we'll, we'll make sure the city clerk sends out that information to all council members as well.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's supposed to be some sort of photo, someone said. Cameron? I think, can we have all the students come here and just come in the middle?
Can we go?
No, no, they want to stay here.
Oh, they wanted to stay?
I just do what they tell me. You guys can stand right here in the middle. Yep, whatever is easier. Come right here. Yep. Attorney Shannon Jones, you just tell us where you want them.
You look like you've never seen pictures taken here before. Take the whole space.
Just go up around the podium.
Scoot up, Jim. Scoot up. Y'all scoot up.
Everybody hit the podium.
Y'all get close to the podium.
We can, we can, we'll just stand.
Yeah, some is in the front and some behind.
You're not getting everything.
Everybody scoot up. Scoot up. Keep going. Get closer. Get closer.
We've got about 20 seconds. Thank you. Great, thank you all. Public hearings. Page four, item E1 is a public hearing from February 27, 2024 that was continued. It is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit number Charlie Uniform dash 2023 dash 0011 to BD Ash Inc. and Rice Mail LLC to allow for the operation of a mini storage warehouse, single entrance interior storage on a 6.14 acre parcel located at 200 Arthur Way, Zone C1 Retail Commercial. The city manager recommends denial. Are there any speakers?
Yes, sir. There are two, sir. Mr. Alan Tanner and Mr. Colin Edwards, questions only.
Thank you. Alan Tanner?
The city manager has recommended?
Correct.
What is the process once they have denied? This?
So I, there's no, it's a recommendation of denial, but city council is the ultimate body.
Okay, so you've recommended denial, okay. I'll save my remarks till later. Okay, thank you.
May I say something? Or is it, we're not making a motion?
There's still?
This is the public hearing.
Just a public hearing, okay.
Okay. Mr. Colin Edwards, questions only?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions? Is there any council members with any questions? Okay.
No, but I'd like to make a statement.
After the public hearing, it's closed.
All right, okay.
Motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Is this closing?
Public hearing.
Just closing the public hearing.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Woodbury?
Go for it.
Yeah, I am stunned frankly, because I have looked at this piece of property. I often go to lunch in that area. It is a perfect placement for it. It absolutely doesn't detract from anybody, and in fact, it enriches the place, that whole area. So I don't know, I really should have called the city manager and gotten his, you know, his opinion, but it is a wonderful, it is sat empty for how many years now? Three, three or four? I don't know how many.
Seven years.
Seven years. I mean, it's disgraceful. And to have something like this that would be an asset to the community, I cannot imagine anybody would deny. Because eventually, as I understand it, there may even be a portion of it that will house a?
Medical facility.
A little medical facility where people in that area could come. I just, I'm just stunned that anybody would be against it because it's sat there empty, no use at all. And now to have something that would not disturb the community at all, but in fact be an asset to it, I am definitely supporting it.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I would echo the same thing from Dr. Woodbury. I think the development, I wanted to hear from the real estate agent last time, he said of the 35 farm freshes in the area, two had not been filled. And now we have an opportunity to bring a development there that's also going to add the medical facilities and charging stations. So I do think it's also a great opportunity for the city to fill that parcel and not allow it to continue to be vacant.
Councilman Harris?
Can I ask a question still?
Sure.
I did have a question that I meant to ask, because I was, my only hesitancy is in the package that we read, it said that if the businesses surrounding the area fail, then you will look at taking over those businesses. My concern is, what are you going to do to ensure that they don't fail? Or if that's even something that, you know, considered?
No, that's right. The way the application was structured was really just to protect my downside. If the restaurants go out of business or retire, or for whatever reason, decide they can no longer operate, and I can't backfill it with another restaurant or nail salon, then I don't have to come back each time for 1,200 feet if it does continue to expand its stores. But my intent is to continue to employ the man who came last time, George Fox, if someone left, to backfill that space as retail and keep it going as retail. And part of helping them is bringing those charging stations and bringing the medical use there to get more traffic back in the back and new lighting and paint and upscaling the landscaping, things like that, to try to help them out. And I have extended the leases, so no one is, I don't get this approval tonight, and then people all go out of business next week. They've all got leases still where they're trying to stay in business. Some extend to 2027 and beyond. So I feel good that this will give them, breathe life into keeping them in business.
Thank you.
Councilman Day?
And I do know, Mr. Manager, that you did recommend denial, but I do see the benefit in having this project move forward to be able to increase the businesses in that, bring business to the area, and also to, you know, prevent from getting into future blight and having it not be of service to our city of Newport News. So I will be supporting it.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion at this time?
So for clarity, the motion is to approve this.
The motion is to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit. Do we need to amend anything, city? Do we need to amend anything, city attorney?
I think you're fine since the motion was to adopt the ordinance that was contained in the package, which has the conditions in it.
Thank you. At this time, are there any further discussion? So the motion's on the table that's been moved and seconded is the request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit to Charlie Uniform dash 2023 dash 0011. That is the motion that's currently on the table. Is there any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Against.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carry, five one.
Thank you. Page 44, item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents, including deeds necessary to effectuate the conveyance of city-owned property located at 1236 29th Street to Toby Homes LLC. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second, whatever.
Got it. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Thank you. Page 48, item E3 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a fourth amendment to tower attachment lease between the city of Newport News, Virginia and New Singular Wireless, doing business as AT&amp;T, for the use of a portion of real property and tower space at Fire Station 8. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Thank you. Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following item. Page 57, minutes of the work session of March 12, 2024. Page 134, minutes of the regular meeting of March 12, 2024. Page 147, a request to approve a resolution changing the location of the regular council meeting, April 23, 2024, the Denby Community Center. Motion to approve the consent agenda, items F1 through F3, all inclusive?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Next on our agenda, other city council actions. Page 150, item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Item G1 is a request to city council to receive and open bids for granting a utility easement across city-owned property located at 750 14th Street, 1202 Ivy Avenue, 1200 Ivy Avenue, and 963 Ivy Avenue in support of the Ivy Avenue Road Reconstruction Project. I recommend approval.
I've received a bid. I don't like the tool. Dear Mayor, council members, please accept this $1 bid from Dominion Energy, Virginia.
Now, they've gone back to a dollar. They went up for a while.
It's inflation. Page 160, item G2, Mr. Manager.
This next item is a request to city council to receive and open bids for granting a utility easement across city-owned property located at 1500 Jefferson Avenue in support of the Southeast Community Early Childhood Education Center. The proposed utility easement is necessary for the installation of power connections to the transformer, which will provide power support to the education center. I recommend approval.
Dear Mayor and council members, again, please accept this $1 bid from Dominion Energy, Virginia. Page 170, item G3, Mr. Manager.
Item G3 is a request to city council to receive and open bids for granting an easement across city-owned property located on Dyaskin Shores Lane in New Kent County. The proposed easement is necessary to extend electrical utilities to neighboring landowners. I recommend approval.
Thank you. Dear Mayor and council members, please accept this $1 bid from Dominion Energy, Virginia. And finally, page 81, I'm sorry, page 181, item G4, Mr. Manager.
Item G4 is a request to adopt an ordinance to amend and reordain City Code Chapter 40, Taxation, Article 11, Tax on Food and Beverages, Section 40-191 dot 1, Exemptions, Limit on Application. Virginia Code, Section 58.1-3840B prohibits cities from levying taxes on the sale of certain foods that are not ready for immediate consumption. In that regard, City Code, Section 40-191 dot 1A exempts certain types of prepared foods that are not considered to be ready for immediate consumption. I recommend adoption.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Thank you. Appropriations, page 184, appropriations, item H, Mr. Manager.
We have two appropriations this evening. The first appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $1,200,000 of fiscal year 2023 Virginia Passenger Rail Authority Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements grant funds for the Newport News Transportation Center project. The city of Newport News, through the Virginia Passenger Rail Authority, has applied for and received a consolidated rail infrastructure and safety improvement grant through the Federal Rail Authority for the track work portion of the Newport News Transportation Center project. The Newport News Transportation Center project, currently under construction, includes a new Amtrak station platform, parking, and roadways locating in the vicinity of Bland Boulevard, Bland Boulevard near the Newport News Williamsburg International Airport. The grant funds require $300,000 as a match, which has been previously appropriated by, which, which is, which has been previously funded through previously appropriated city Second appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $1,750,000 from the fiscal year 2024 Bond Authorization Community Development category in support of maritime economic development projects. The northern harbor of the Seafood Industrial Park has suffered severe silting, reducing water depth to a level that has impacted use of this portion of the harbor by seafood industrial park tenants. Additionally, the commercial docks currently located in this portion of the seafood industrial park are beyond their useful life, with significant rot and deterioration in the pilings and supporting timbers. This project site is adjacent to the location of the seafood market planned as a part of the implementation of the Choice Neighborhood Initiative work, and the dock design includes the addition of a dock for transient boats visiting the market. I recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve items H1 and H2?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just, I would like to say, just on the last part that you mentioned about the seafood market and all of the improvements that we're working on as a city to be able to have that actually come to fruition, and to, and the other things that we voted on tonight are, I'm just thankful that it's all a part of being able to improve our choice neighborhood area with the housing and doing the infrastructure improvements to be able to bring the new housing as well as new businesses to the lower part of Ivy and Jefferson Avenue.
Any further discussion?
I would just like to say I'm looking forward to buying the seafood.
At this time, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments. Item I, citizen comment on matters germane to council. I will call each name in the order it appears in front of me. Dr. Kristi Norwood?
Good evening. We come to the gifts. My name is Kristi Norwood. I'm a resident of Newport News. We just come before you all to say thank you for your support of the 2024 Xcel Summit. We appreciate the partnership, and we welcomed approximately 194 women to the city of Newport News. 100% of our attendees reported their attention to return to the summit in 2025, and our intention is to host the summit in 2025 and 2026 in the city of Newport News. Again, we would like to personally thank the city council, Mayor Jones, our city manager, and Councilwoman Vick for your support. We strive to be the premier mental health summit for the city of Newport News and continue to partner with the city just to advance the mental health and wellness of our city. just to advance the mental health and wellness of our city. And so as a token of our appreciation, we have brought some gifts for you all. Um, they are the bags that our women received as a result of coming to the summit, uh, but they are also relevant for those who identify as men, so we hope that you will use them or pass them along to the women in your life. So thank you all again for your support, and we do look forward to continuing to partner for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six.
Perfect. Thank you so much. If you just give it to the clerk, she'll take care of it.
Well, and as they're doing that, I would just like to say I thank you all for thinking about Newport News and the Marriott to be able to host this important summit, particularly as it relates to mental health and the concerns for women. So thank you all, and I'm glad we were, as a city, to be able to support you.
Thank you.
And Josh, don't worry, they're under twenty dollars, okay? Too soon. Uh, next up, we'll have Mendel Service. Hello.
I get three minutes, right?
You get three minutes, ma'am.
Cool. I'm glad to be here. Since I've been coming over the years, one thing that I've found lacking is there's nothing really representing people in Newport News who are artists. And so we're a really neglected community in terms of when the wonderful Christopher Newport University did away with Peninsula Fine Arts Center, it further decreased opportunities for many of us to be represented. So I have a really important request. Whoever has given somebody permission to be the only artist visually on most of the walls, especially down Warwick Boulevard, could we have a moratorium? Could we, okay, I don't know if you've seen it, you can't miss it, and you get used to it after a while, even though it's like the emperor's new clothes, when everybody's saying, isn't that wonderful? There's this black and white splotches of one artist running down Warwick Boulevard on trucks, on the Cannes building. There are so many more of us that need to be allowed permission to be seen. Norfolk has its somewhat pretentious, but they have their neon district. If you go to Virginia Beach, they have a lot of murals by different artists. And I'd like to see a change in decisions being made so that there's more reflection of all the diversity that is here. Personally, my eyes are going cross-eyed seeing the same image everywhere I go, and I really would appreciate, I know when I had my first business, they said you had to have permission to put things on the wall. This artist is everywhere, plus the scribbles now. And that's okay for that person that they need to put that in their journal, and let's see other artists being represented. So that's my request, and I hope that you hear me, because one of the things about being homeless, there's cultural homelessness when your culture is not reflected. And please, I know I look like I'm black because of my skin color, but I've lived all over England, Canada, across the USA. I want to see diversity. I'm not representing just black people because it's always the same stories. I'm representing all of us. So please, somehow, whoever cousin is giving this person permission to put their art everywhere, tell them. We're tired of seeing it because we're getting used to it, and we're, we're falling asleep, and it can be much better. So that's all I've got to say. I think I used up my three minutes. If I didn't, I won't even sing a song because I've lost my voice. Oh, the last thing is, we often talk about young people. There's a population that really is struggling, and the arts could help them, are seniors. I got the opportunity to become seventy years old March the third, and I thought, oh my God, I'm old. It happened. But I want to hear more programs for seniors because isolation, mental health issues, taking a handy ride, all of these things are not being addressed, the bus service, please remember seniors. I think that's all I can say. Come try and tie it together. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
And, okay, that's it.
Thank you so much. Councilman, uh, Councilman Long has a comment.
Yeah, one thing I, um, I'm glad you pointed that out. So the Fine Arts Center actually relocated to CNU's campus, Torkler Arts Center, and that is open to the public. I know that's one of the things they started looking at, is how to make sure people are aware that the Fine Arts Center is at CNU's campus. They have parking spaces available, and actually one of the collections is uh on loan from Hampton University. So, you know, please take our opportunity to go out there and visit it.
First of all, it was through the Mrs. Pro-
Less of a, less, less of a-
Oh, you're not allowed to talk back?
Less of a back and forth, the more of a informative-
Oh, that's awful.
That's a, I don't understand what you've said.
Neg, uh, new business. Our next item is new business. City manager?
None, sir.
City attorney?
Nothing, sir.
City clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Woodbury?
Yes, I want to make sure you connect with uh our Association of the Arts, because I talked about that. When I read all the reports from all of the uh, all of the uh different aspects of our city government, one of them is an art, about the arts, and you should be in contact. So before you leave, uh, I hope somebody, one of the assistant managers or, yeah, there's somebody who's going to help you.
Can I love to say thank you?
You can.
Yes, indeed. And you're allowed to say anything else you want to. I'm, I'm talking with you, so you can answer me back.
Oh, I can answer you back?
Yes.
Oh, that's beautiful. I appreciate that because I hate bad answers. So I won't go wrong because I don't want to be rude, but I can tell sometimes I am. So, but thank you, love.
Oh, thank you. All right. Also, thank you all for coming down and being involved. And please, uh, please look online, find one of these departments that you can sign up for and be a volunteer on, and get the word out, and how you can serve your city by being a part of it and being part of the decisions that are made with it. And I would suggest you would join the Arts Department and look online and find out where, how you do that, and you can set, set a fire under them, I'm sure. So I thank, thank you all for coming down and congratulations to our young people. You are very fine. What, uh, what did, the date again? I wanted to let everybody know.
April twenty-four.
April twenty-four, and it's in the-
Circuit Court.
Circuit Court, okay. That's very important that we support them and that you choose a side and let, let them know which side you're choosing, and they better argue well for it. Again, I thank you, and uh I hope everybody has a beautiful and wonderful Easter holiday and uh many returns on um other interests in your life. Thank you.
Councilman Harris.
Good evening, and also want to thank everyone for coming out to the young people for sharing your information on tonight. I do believe when you had your event, you were visited by Judge Dante Bug, if I'm not mistaken. If you know already, he's one of our Newport News own hometown from Heritage High School right next door to you all, and he always, whenever he has opportunity, oh, yeah, he, he wants applause. Uh, whenever he has an opportunity to come down, I know he loves it, so I know y'all did a great job because he always wants to be able to give back and, and hopefully lead you on to the same pathway that he paved uh in following his, his criminal justice journey. So I thank you all for, for taking heed to that program and those that are putting it together. Uh, I do want to mention, uh, we had a great time Saturday at the March Mania Event over at Minchfield High School. It was the family and community engagement specialists from Newport News Public Schools. They put on a clinic for students, athletes, to come in and uh play basketball. They even had a staff-based student game for the females and the males, and it was quite interesting, um, to say the least. Uh, but the adults took care of business while they were out there. It's just a fun environment to see the families out, kids having a good time. And there were several cheerleading groups uh from Newport News that performed, and um they did a phenomenal job. So thank you to Newport News Public Schools and the face specialists for putting that on. Anytime we have an opportunity to engage our young people in, in activities like that, it goes a long way. And I do want to highlight this one young man I had an opportunity to talk with, a young man from Haddonwood Elementary School. He's a second grader by the name of Ronald Jones. Uh, Ronald Jones, he was a, loves football, loves basketball, loves track, uh, but he does a lot for the kids at his school from what I was able to get from him and the adults, and he helps a lot of people out. I want to acknowledge that. Hope he continues to have that same spirit about him, to continue to help out young people as he can grow and matures into a young man. And um he runs track, and he wants to be an NFL and track star when he gets older. Uh, so maybe one day when he's not able to run as fast and, and he may follow your lead in being in the criminal justice as far as uh helping people out in that uh system, uh, whether it's a lawyer or a judge or what have you. Uh, so I do want to highlight Ronald Jones and thank you for everyone who's came out. And I didn't get a chance to attend your mental health event, but I heard great things about it, and that's something that is very much needed as we are all struggling challenges with our uh social isolation from COVID, and now we're getting back out and about, but it's still some that are still having those challenges. So thank you for what you're doing for our, our ladies, and hopefully somebody will take the mantle and do it for our men at some point. Uh, so we continue to support those um outlets for our residents, and thank you for, for doing that. And that's all I have, Mayor Jones.
Councilman Long.
I also want to thank everyone for coming out here this after, uh, this evening, uh, especially the young people. Um, you know, kudos to what you're doing and working with Attorney Jones. I think that's a great program to learn about law and being in the courtroom. I went last year, and it was really uh a good event, so I really thank you for continuing with that. I also want to say to Dr. Norwood, thank you as well for having the, the health, women's health uh event here in Newport News. Like, uh, Councilman Harris spoke of, you know, that is a concern. We, we need to make sure we're addressing the concerns and needs of uh women's health, and hopefully someone will take the mantle up and provide some for men's health as well. Uh, also want to mention, uh, the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. Um, they're going to be offering classes um starting uh April eighth every Monday, and it's um volunteers, it's Chesapeake Stewards Class, so you'll get to learn topics, local waterways, uh urban ar- agriculture, uh diversity in environmental fields, wildlife, wetlands, urban and rural solutions, and also be a field trip. Anyone that's interested in this program, it's going to be at Ivy Baptist Church uh starting April eighth. If you're interested, five to seven. If you're interested, register at cbf.org slash N N Voices. That's all I have.
Councilman Vick.
Oh, yes. I would like to, uh, I do, too, want to welcome the students uh from Achieve a Dream and all that you are learning from Attorney Shannon Jones with the court, and um to also appreciate, show my appreciation for the sponsors, you all who help to guide and mold our children, and, and to not just think about court and law, but also as elected offices, you want to be able to help govern your city. So I hope I will be able to see you all in some of our positions. And um I'll, I have to say this, um, uh, last week we went to the opening of the Thrive Headquarters, and um they, um, headed by Angela York, the executive director, but I have to say that was one of the most, um, such, uh, so much vibrancy at that event to be able to welcome the headquarters of, of a agency that really helps those in need, and to be able to see that they have opened that, a grocery store where people, when they don't have money to actually buy groceries, they can go and go there to get food, as well as they have also partnered with a bookstore so that to help our children and families be able to read, that you can also have access to free books. So I want to say kudos to, um, Ms. York and her entire team for bringing that to Newport News. Um, also, I wanted to just say I had an opportunity to, as a city, we do invest in our transit system, our Hampton Roads Transit System, and I had the pleasure of being able to go on a bus ride um from our station on thirty, on Thirty-Eighth Street, Thirty-Eighth, Thirty-Ninth Street, to our city center area. But I just want to say to the executive director, and I, Pat, are you still on the board?
I'm still on the board.
And Councilwoman Woodbury is still on the board, but I enjoyed my ride. It, it was good to see that they're using the dollars, that everything was clean, um, up to date, and I just really appreciated not having to drive and to be able to be in good hands at, with HRT. And lastly, I just want to congratulate my grandson, number three, Tyson Carter, who was selected to be the quarterback at Huntington Middle School for football.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'm going to follow suit. Um, and um by saying thank you so much for everyone that came out. Uh, kudos on a successful event. Um, and of course, to the young folks in, in the Stars Program, uh, Ms. Jones and the adult leadership have done a phenomenal job. Uh, I will do everything within my power to be at this next one because I always enjoy it for sure. And to, uh, the young lady, uh, who mentioned the, the arts, arts and culture for sure, uh, is a priority for us, and, and the, the young man that you're referring to is Art, uh, D Kane, phenomenal young guy, uh, but definitely I'll stay back and, and we can talk about ways to get you incorporated uh as well. So, um, with that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll be briefed tonight. Just congratulations, Dr. Norwood, on a successful uh summit. We look forward to a continued partnership over the years as we continue to invest in our community priorities. Uh, to the youth, I'll be excited to see you in a few weeks, uh, along with Attorney Jones in chief and his entire, the entire crew. So I'm excited about that. I think it's a great program. We look forward to, uh, to seeing you in person in a few weeks. And, uh, finally, on a more somber note, my, my heart sort of grieves with Baltimore and with, uh, Mayor Brandon Scott right now. Uh, he just had a kid a few months ago. He's, he's a friend, and, uh, to deal with that at an early time is, is pretty rough. So from all of us here in Newport News, Brandon, we're sending you love and city, and sending, uh, the city of Baltimore love and support. We stand adjourned. Thank you.